All right, good evening. I'd like to call the zoning board of appeals for Tuesday, June 7th, 2022 to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Phoe.
Here.
Ms. Selesny. Ms. Selesny. Mr. Friedman.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Weigum.
Here.
Mr. Havas.
Here.
Ma'am, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
There's none at this time.
Okay, so let's move into the public hearing. For those of you who haven't joined us before, let me briefly describe how we conduct business. The city will call each case by the case number. They'll read a short summary of the case. We ask the appellant to step to the microphone after they finish reading their summary and state your name and address for the record. I believe there's also a sign-in sheet there, too. And we ask you to explain to us what you're asking for and why. And then the city will read a findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree with those or add any other information at that time. Then the city will read a staff recommendation. Then we'll turn it over to public comment. So if you're not the appellant, but you wish to speak on a case, that would be your opportunity to speak on that case. Then we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Again, we ask the appellant to stay basically at the podium in case we have questions or comments that we need further clarification from you. So will the city call the first case, please?
Okay, the appellants Valerie and Peter Evans owners are requesting the following waiver from the board, a waiver for a second garage, one permitted, two proposed. The property is located on 17251 Edwards Ave between Pearson and Lethrop Boulevard, Sidwell parcel number 762412376002, Zoned RE, single-family residential. This appeal is section 5.62, Article 5, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
All right, thank you. Are the appellants here? Hi there. If you'll just step up to And again, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Valerie Evans, address 17251 Edwards Ave, Southfield, 48076.
Great, thank you. And sir?
Peter Evans. 17251 Edwards Ave.
Great, thank you. And if you could just explain to us what you're asking for and why, please. And if you could speak as close to the microphone as possible, that would be real helpful.
Okay. We're asking to construct a second garage and turn our existing garage into living space. And I understand that what we're asking is against the ordinance because of the type of garage door we want to use on the attached existing garage. I have pictures of the type of design we want to use. I don't know if you would want to look at the pictures or not, but it's the glass type of door that raises, and it gives you a clear view of the living space. So that's the type of garage door we want to use when we convert the attached garage into a living space and then build the second garage.
Okay, understood. Will the city read the findings of fact, please, and just stay right there for us?
Okay, finding of facts case 22-11. The appellant Valerie and Peter Evans-
Would you speak up, please?
Yes, the appellant, the appellants Valerie and Peter Evans owners are requesting the following waiver from the board, a variance for a second garage, one permitted, two proposed. The property is located 17251 Edwards Ave between Pearson and Lethrop Boulevard, Sidwell parcel number 2412376002, Zoned RE, single-family residential. This appeal is to section 5.69, Article 5, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as zoning ordinance. The properties to the north-south, north-southeast and west are Zoned RE, single-family residential, and are developed with single-family dwellings. Field inspections reveal that the surrounding dwelling exteriors are mostly brick with mixture of various siding materials. Most of the dwellings in the surrounding areas are one or two-story with a few 1.5-story dwellings mixed in. All the dwellings in the area have attached garages. The majority homes in the surrounding area were built in 1970s and range from 1,500 square feet to 3,500 square feet. Along both sides, Edwards of Edwards Ave, the east, to the east and west, all the homes have conforming setbacks, but very greatly. All of the homes in the surrounding areas are conformed in setback requirements. The proposed subject home is a one-story, 1,809 square feet in area, constructed with brick and stone exterior on a full basement. The dwelling includes two-car attached garage. The parcel is approximately one acre in size. The appellant is asking for a waiver to add a detached garage in the rear yard, one allowed, two proposed.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add at this point?
No.
Okay. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration of the following waiver to construct one additional detached garage, one permitted, two proposed, with the following conditions. The structure meets all requirements of the building code. The appellant secures all permits that is required for the proposed construction, that the property is not used for any commercial business use or storage. Okay, this recommendation is based on the following. Due to the extraordinary or exceptional conditions of the property on which the garage is proposed, and the strict application of the regulations will result in practical difficulties to or undue hardship upon the owner of such property. Provided such relief may be granted with substantial detriment to the, to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and proposed of the ordinance. That the proposed garage is constant with the spirit and the intent of this character and the regulations which apply to the zoning district. That are the proposed garage in keeping with this character of the surrounding areas and would not have advise or detrimental effect upon the adjacent or surrounding properties.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything you'd like to add at this point? Otherwise, we'll open public comment and just kind of keep you near the front.
No, I guess we understood. Will you clarify what that, all of that meant?
Yes, we can. All right, so at this point, we'll open public comment on this case. If there's anyone present who wishes to speak or on this case has any comments about this case, this is your opportunity. So seeing none, we'll close public comment and we'll turn it over to the board. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with it. I was just wondering, have you, in the converting of the garage that you do have into, into living space, have you gone over all that with the city as well?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
So we've talked with this homeowner a couple of times about this project, and the original plan was to convert the existing attached garage to habitable space or even just storage. But that means removing the overhead door. Because as long as there's an overhead door there, you're going to be able to park a car in there or store whatever you're going to do in there. And it requires that we have them remove that, that overhead door and fill in that space to match the rest of the house. That became a problem for this homeowner due to the fact that they hadn't anticipated having to do that right away. But they have, I believe they have some classic cars, if I'm not, there's some automobiles that they want to keep indoors, and they wanted to know if they could build the second garage while they were doing the work on the, making this into some sort of a habitable space. There, there is an issue with the door that they, they're proposing because it's still an overhead door, and it opens up that space. So the solution was, let's just ask for the waiver for a second garage. And the, the space that they're going to renovate is going to, they're proposing this overhead door, this glass overhead door, whatever they're proposing, and it, it would still be considered a garage.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no issue with the second garage. It seems like the backyard has plenty of space and, you know, the, I don't see your next-door neighbors here complaining, and certainly the commercial people behind you won't seem to have an issue with it. So I have no, I have no problem with it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Havas?
I have no problem with it as well. I agree with the city's recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weigum?
I went by and I checked out your place, and you had six cars there, one in the garage and five out parking around. So how big is that garage supposed to be?
Two and a half.
Yes, the proposed new garage, the dimensions are, I believe, 24 by 24. So that's two cars.
So a two-car garage back there.
Two cars, yes.
Okay, and I did notice that there, you would be the only house with a detached garage, at least when I went down the whole block. You're kind of setting the stage. The other thing is, is that I couldn't find the place. I couldn't get in. I went in here and it's one-way. I got there and it says, "Too bad, buddy." And I had to go all the way out and go back down and then go in off Pier Street.
Right.
But I was allowed to get out.
Right.
So that's unique. And I did notice the houses, and your house in particular, it's really lovely. The outside is, I don't even know what you call the circles like that.
Archways.
Spanish.
Archways, yeah.
Yeah, it's very nice. I don't have a problem with this as long as the neighbors don't have a problem. And I don't see anything from the neighbors, and no one commented on it. So the only question I had was, how big was it going to be? And just noting to you that yours is going to be the only one in neighborhood with a unattached garage.
Yes. All right, Mr. Rogers?
I didn't really, I didn't have a problem at all. The garage that they're proposing in the backyard is setback, and I think it also is, the rear yard goes to a commercial property on 12 Mile. So that's not an issue. And I thought this is a very creative way to take the old garage and convert it into what they're, what I'm seeing in this drawing. Whether they turn that back into a garage or not, I highly, I highly doubt that. But I don't have a problem with the extra garage that they want to.
Okay, I agree. There's a couple detached garages across the street, isn't there?
Yeah.
Correct.
If you look to the left, yeah, there's like two. I was like, oh, I think they have two garages.
I looked on their side, I didn't see any.
Yeah, yeah. So, no, lovely home and happy to support this. So, Mr. Rogers, will you
make a motion for us?
Regarding case number, ZBA case number 22-11, the appellants Valerie and Peter Evans owners are requesting the following waiver from the board, a variance for a second garage, one permitted, two proposed. The property is located on 17251 Edwards Ave between Pearson and Lethrop Boulevard, Sidwell parcel 2412376002, Zoned RE, single-family residential. I make a motion to recommend this variance to allow for a second detached garage in the rear yard. And I am basing this with the following conditions. One, that the structure meets all requirements of the building code. Two, that the appellant secures all permits required for proposed construction, and that the property is not used for any commercial business use or storage. This, I'm making this motion based upon the following. One, due to the extraordinary or exceptional conditions of the property on which the garage is proposed, and the strict application of the regulations, would result in practical difficulties to or undue hardship upon the owner of such property, provided such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of this ordinance. Number two, that the proposed garage is consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the regulations which apply to the zoning district. And three, that the proposed garage is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's a unanimous vote. So work with the city to get your permits, and they'll help you through the process, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Have a good night. Will the city call the next case, please?
Second case is going to be case 22-12. Appellants Christopher, oh man.
Speak up, please.
Christopher Larvitzer. I'm sorry if I messed up the wrong name, the last name. And Elaine Carroll owners are, owners are requesting the following waiver from the board to permit an accessory building without primary use of a single-family dwelling. The property is located on the north side of Gulfview Drive between Berg and Plattsburg at 23006 Gulfview Drive, Sidwell parcel number 762433327006, Zoned R1, single-family residential. This appeal is to section 5.62, Article 5, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
All right, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hello.
Good evening.
If you could each state your name and address for the record, please.
Elaine Carroll, 22972 Gulfview and Southfield.
Chris Larvitzer, 22990 Gulfview Drive, Southfield.
Okay, thank you. And can you explain to us what you're asking for and why, please?
We are asking to keep the existing garage on the property at 23006 Gulfview.
Speak into the microphone.
We're asking to keep the existing garage that's already on the property at 23006 Gulfview Drive. We've had the house demolished, and we understand that the normal procedure is to go ahead and demolish all the buildings. However, the garage is in great shape, and really, it's kind of the reason why I wanted the piece of land.
Okay. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes, finding of facts, case 22-12. The appellant Christopher Larvitzer and Elaine Carroll owners are requesting the following waiver from the board, a waiver to keep a garage without a primary structure. The property is located on the north side of Gulfview in between Berg and Plattsburg Street at 23006 Gulfview Drive, Sidwell parcel 762433327006, Zoned R1, single-family residential. This appeal is to section 5.69, Article 5, Chapter 45, the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as zoning ordinance. The properties to the north-southeast and west are Zoned R1 and R2, single-family residential, and are developed with single-family dwellings in the supervisor's Gulfview estate. Field inspection of the surrounding areas reveals that the properties to the south are mostly single-story ranch-style dwellings, exterior made up of siding materials. Dwellings in this area mostly detached garage with few properties not having a garage. The subject property is currently a vacant lot. The previous house was a bungalow, single-family dwelling with a detached garage. The house was demolished in 2021 under the demolition permit, PB21-2180.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add at this point? If you are, just come closer to the microphone, that's all I'd ask.
Yes, no, I would just note that the house was demolished in 2022. There were a lot of stops in the process, so just the correction.
Okay, thank you. She said the property was demolished actually in 2022-
Yes.
-because of delays in the process.
Yes.
Okay. Can the city read the staff recommendation, please?
All right. Staff does not make, recommend the approval of the following waiver for keeping an accessory structure without a main dwelling. Chapter 45 of the Southfield zoning ordinance does not permit an accessory structure without a principal structure on the property.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add before we turn it over to public comment?
Well, I'd like to add that the property was a huge cleanup project, and that was my motivation for assisting Chris. We have already spent twice what the property is worth in cleaning it up. It was quite, quite something. So this would be an additional cost tearing it down, and it does fit into the neighborhood. It looks okay. It's usable. It, it's not making sense to me to just ignore all that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's open public comment, and let's start public comment with the letter that we have. Will you read that, Mr. Friedman, please?
Sure. We've received a letter that begins, "We, the undersigned, present no objection to the accessory building on the property located on the north side of Gulfview Drive between Berg and Plattsburg at 23006 Gulfview Drive, Sidwell parcel number 762433327006, Zoned R1, single-family residential. In our absence at the public hearing, we are providing written opinion in favor of the appellants Christopher Larvitzer," I apologize if I got that wrong, "and Elaine Carroll, owners of the property, to keep existing structures on their premises. By signing below, the individuals listed are in favor of the waiver to permit an accessory building without the primary use of a single-family dwelling at 23006 Gulfview Drive. And it's signed Ricardo Moore, 23005 Gulfview Drive, Lungus Moore, 23005 Gulfview Drive, Jeremy C. Lane, 22850 Gulfview Drive, Jacqueline Lane, 22850 Gulfview Drive. It looks like, I can't read the first name, Kat Van, 23009 Gulfview Drive, Colette Van, 23009 Gulfview Drive, Raymond-
Heron?
Heron, 23015 Gulfview, and then-
Edward Muffler.
Edward-
Mickler, I think. You can see, he switched his signature and printing.
Oh, there, Edward Mick-
Mickle?
Mickle, at 22893 Gulfview Drive, Rory-
Nagy?
Larry.
Larry, thank you.
22865 Gulfview Drive, and Brianna Nagy, Brendan-
Brendan Nagy.
Brendan Nagy, 22865 Gulfview Drive, and Catherine Blakely, it looks like, 22791 Gulfview.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we'll open public comment. If there's anyone from the public who is joining us and wishes to speak to this case, this is your opportunity to step forward to the microphone and share with us whatever your opinions are. Seeing none, we will close public comment then and turn it over to the board. Mr. Weigum?
Yeah. I am intimately aware of this project because I live in Plattsburg, eight houses away from this. Now, this house that was demolished, and it wasn't demolished, as you said, it wasn't demolished in 2021. It was demolished two weeks ago. The, the house had a caved-in roof. It was a dangerous, dangerous situation. And I called the city I don't know how many times, "Let's get this down. What's going on?" And the building department says, "Hey, it's out of our hands. It's over in legal." So I called legal, and legal said, "Oh, it's in litigation. We can't do anything yet." I said, "It's not only an eyesore, but it's dangerous. What if a kid goes in there?" The roof had a big hole in it. Rain was going in. And finally, this man stepped up, bought the property, demolished it. He hasn't gotten all the debris out, but he's going to. The garage in back of it is a nice garage. Nothing wrong with it, and it sits far back. You have to look for it from the road to see it. So to, to, after this man went ahead and did that, because he's the adjacent property owner, looking over there and seeing this eyesore, dangerous building, stepped up and did that, he is now able to store a lot of his stuff there. And I strongly, strongly support the appellant on this. We, as you can see, all the signatures here, everybody in that neighborhood is saying, "Thank you."
That's all. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers, can you follow that?
That's a hard act to follow. I'm in 100% agreement with Mr. Weigum. You know, I've had a history in my life where I've lived next to eyesores, and I've wanted to buy the property. Here, they had an opportunity that presented itself. They own two properties adjacent already. And I don't know if you've been following the cost of construction, to tear down that two-car garage is completely foolish. And the cost of rebuilding it from scratch is all, is an economic, it just doesn't make any sense. I agree with Mr. Weigum saying that the garage is far back. That street also lends itself, there's, it's very treed and very, very shaded, and you just can't see anything unless you kind of get out of your car and start walking. I think what, the overwhelming majority, you know, all these signatures tell me that the, all the neighbors are happy that they went ahead and did this, and they would not want to see that, that two-car garage coming down at this point. It's, it's, it makes sense to allow the, the structure to stay there. I can understand if the structure was being used for commercial storage or something like that, and they didn't own any property right next door. But they're, they're all in. They're invested in, in where their life is. So I, I'm all for it.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Friedman?
I don't feel as strongly as, as either of my colleagues, but I do agree with everything they've said. And I would also point out that we've just approved a waiver for a second garage for somebody who, you know, on their property. He owns the property to the east. If he, I'm sure it's an onerous process to merge the lots, and that would be-
It's probably not. $400.
What?
It's $400.
Oh, so it's not so good.
I would recommend it.
But, but, but I'm saying, you know, if he wants to use, you know, the lot next door and a garage on a, on a piece of property, adjacent piece of property that he owns, you know, we, we just approved a similar waiver. And I, and again, I agree with everything else in favor of the waiver that my colleagues have said.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Havas?
Yeah, I'm going to support the appellant as well. I mean, I don't see the reason to tear down a perfectly good garage. Not clearly, the neighbors don't have an issue with it as well, so I'm going to agree with them as well.
Yeah, so I, I am glad to know you were a neighbor. I did not realize that at first. I didn't realize that as part of the, I honestly, when I went back and looked at the documents, I was like, "Oh, yes, your addresses are adjacent." Went completely over my head. So I'm glad that was pointed out. Thank you for talking to your neighbors. That tells us, we can't talk to everybody, right? So it tells us that you've engaged your neighbors, people know what you're doing, and at least the people you've talked to were willing to sign and support it. So thank you. You did everything right. We appreciate it. Thank you for taking down an eyesore. Obviously, as Mr. Rogers pointed out, the cost of demolition on top of the cost of construction, both are very expensive right now. Kind of to what Mr. Friedman alluded to, if you are adjacent property owners, I would recommend that you combine the parcel with your property for a couple reasons. One, you'll get one tax bill instead of two tax bills. Oftentimes, that second tax bill gets lost, confused, and it ends up coming to me because I work at the county treasurer's office, and it starts in the tax foreclosure process.
Right.
So do not want you to, you know, forget that there's a second property. I'm sure going through this whole process, you would not. But do highly encourage you to combine the property. You could split it and combine it with both of your properties if that's an opportunity. That's up to you, but I would highly recommend that. It's not that tedious of a process, and it's not that expensive of a process, especially with what you've already gone through. So I also, if I didn't say that already, I support what you're asking for. So we need to, if I could ask the city, is there any conditions that you would ask to be placed on approval of this variance?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was-
I didn't think you were listening to me.
Could you repeat the question, madam?
No problem. So seeing as how the board supports their variance request, is there any conditions that the city would need or like to see on an approval of this waiver?
Yeah, we would, I think this whole thing could have been avoided if they would have combined the properties to begin with.
Right.
If they would have just done that first, we wouldn't be here.
Yeah, but I think if we have two different neighbors on two different sides.
Okay.
Right, that you have to get the house down, I think, before you could decide how to break it up.
So the conditions would be that they complete the, the demolition process and I don't know if the, the board was aware, there's a court order involved on this property. They went to court and, and a judgment was made to clean up the property, remove all buildings, all debris, all, and the garage. So they went back and, and appealed that and got the court to agree to that, that they could leave the garage based on the findings of the board.
Okay.
So if the board is okay with this, then the building department has no issue with it.
Okay.
Other than that they need to complete that permit and that process and get their final inspections and, and clean up that property completely as, as is stated in the court, in the court order.
Okay. Mr. Friedman, you want to make a motion?
Sure. I'm on the wrong. The appellant, you know, in regard to case number twenty-two dash twelve, the appellant's Christopher LaVitzer and Elaine Carroll owners are requesting the following waiver to keep a garage on their, on their lot without a primary structure. The property is located on the north side of Gulfwood Drive between Berg and Plattsburg Street at two-three-zero-zero-six Gulfwood Drive Sidwell Parcel number seven-six-two-four-three-three-three-two-seven-zero-six Zoned R-1 Single Family Residential. I move that we approve the waiver to keep the garage without a primary structure. I, I make this recommendation based on the fact that the, the owners own the adjacent properties and it would be a hardship for them to have to remove the garage. I would make this, I would make this recommendation with the following conditions, that they continue with the demolition, court order demolition of all the other adjacent, all the other buildings on the property and clean up the property in accordance with the court order and that the, that the garage not be used for any commercial or business use or storage.
Okay, great. Can I have a second?
Second and one comment. The city and other places do not like to have just the name Gulfview. They got to put "Drive" on it. It isn't. It's a Gulfview, period. Plattsburg? Plattsburg, not Plattsburg Street. So in your, when you said Gulfview Drive is just plain Gulfview, no drive.
I was, I was just reading.
I know, because I live there. Anyway, I second, I second the motion with that.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so you can talk to the building department after this, but again, just continue to clean up the property and, you know, you may keep your garage, but definitely encourage you to look at combining those properties with your own. Okay?
And Mr. Christopher, there was some, remember, some beat-up sheds in the back of the garage. I assume that you're going to get rid of those. It's gone already.
Good.
The shed and the camper, gone. Well, it's not gone. It's in a heap waiting for a dumpster.
In the pile. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, will the city call the next case, please?
Next case, twenty-two dash thirteen. The appellant Aaron and Delia Zadruski owners are requesting the following waiver from the board, a waiver to erect the fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard, zero permitted, thirty feet, six inches proposed. The property is located on the east side of Woodstock Street between Madison Street and Nadora Street at three-zero-four-six-zero Woodstock Sidwell Parcel number two-four-one-two one-two-six-zero-three-two Zoned R-2 Single Family Residential. The appeal is to Article Four, Section five-point-three-seven-point-one, Paragraph C, Chapter forty-five of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Good evening, ZBA.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Aaron Stroyewski, three-zero-four-six-zero Woodstock Street.
It's beautiful how that rolls off your tongue and none of ours.
Yeah, I even practiced that. I don't, I don't even know if I have it right.
All right, if you could explain to us what you're asking for and why, please?
We have a corner lot and currently we're only permitted to have a fence, any kind of fence, from the back corner of the house straight to the back of the property line. We have a large side yard on that and we want to take a privacy fence from the garage up to where the survey line is into the easement, all the way to the back and encapsulate.
Okay, all right. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yep, finding of facts, case twenty-two dash thirteen. The appellant Aaron and Delia Zardreski, sorry.
Z is fine.
The owners are requesting the following waiver from the board, a waiver to erect the fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard, zero feet permitted, thirty feet, six inches proposed. The property is located on the east side of Woodstock Street between Madison Street and Nadora Street at three-zero-four-six-zero Woodstock Sidwell Parcel two-four-one-two one-two-six-zero-three-two Zoned R-2 Single Family Residential. The appeal is to, I mean, the appeal is to Article Four, Section five-point-three-seven-point-one, Paragraph C, Chapter forty-five of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The properties to the north, south, east, and west are Zoned R-2 Single Family Residential and are developed with single-family dwellings in the Pinewood Manor Sub. Field inspections of the surrounding areas reveals that the properties to the north, south, east, and west are mostly two-story, single-family dwellings. The exterior are made of mostly brick and siding. Most of the homes in the area have attached garages. The surrounding corner, corner lots are mostly legal non-conforming with fences that come beyond the side setback the lot coverage requires for a double-frontage lot. The subject property was built in nineteen-sixty-four and is two thousand forty-seven square feet, two-story, single-family residential with an attached garage on a full basement. The appellant proposed to erect a privacy fence beyond the setback for a double-frontage lot, zero feet permitted, thirty feet, it's not saying five inches proposed.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes, I do.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add at this time?
Uh, no.
Okay. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Yes, yes. The staff recommendation is for favorable consideration of the following waiver for six-foot-high privacy fence, thirty feet, five inches beyond the side of the house. The fence must comply with all other fence requirements. The recommendation is based upon the following, due to the unique conditions of the property on which the fence is proposed and the strict application of the regulations will result in practical difficulties to the owner of such a property. The proposed fence is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have any adverse or detrimental effect upon the adjacent surrounding properties.
Great, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add before we open public comment?
Uh, no.
Okay, no problem. So let's open public comment. If you are here to speak to this case, this is your opportunity to step forward and give us your opinions. And if not, seeing none, we will close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, we seem to have this case come up every so often. It's, their landscape is lovely. I can see why they want to close it in. There's plenty of room and I don't have an issue with this at all.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Wygum?
Yeah, what you have there is obviously a lot of care and kindness and it's beautiful to look at from the, from, what is it, Nadora Avenue there.
Thank you.
Is your fence, is it, how close is it going to be to the curb?
Um, the curb, I believe, is another fifteen feet or so from that. I believe I have, I might have.
City, do you know?
Yeah, this property line, there's an easement that it would be allowed for a future sidewalk and a, and a berm area.
Which means that some of the material that you have that's planted there, maybe even your little arbor there, would have to move back.
Well, that might be on the outside of the fence because the fence line is.
Okay. Your neighbor to the east, I guess it is, has, has a fence along there too. Would it meet his fence?
Um, no, because the survey showed the, the easement and property line starting about six inches to a foot inside of that fence. Because originally, we wanted to go even a little further than his, but apparently we were not able to.
Okay, well, as long as the, as the city feels that there's enough, I didn't want it to go right up to the curb because that would, that would not.
It, it's going to be inside of his property line.
Okay, and that, and there's always, what, two feet? City owns two feet on, on the.
Well, it could be, it goes, it's, the property line divides with the easement. It's, they're the same line. So the property line and the street easement, which is probably sixty feet wide, would include the berm from the curb back to his property line, which is probably, as he had mentioned, about fifteen feet, which would allow space for a sidewalk and a berm area.
Yeah, you're going to have to unfortunately lose some of that beauty that's in there now. Do you go out there and cogitate, evaluate, sit, watch the birds?
Absolutely.
It's, it's really, if you haven't seen it, it's really quite lovely. And I'm, I'm in support, particularly if there's, goes along the property line.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I support it. I'll just note that the city's recommendation said this is a unique conditions of the property. This is not at all unique. We get this case all the time. Somebody's got to amend the fence ordinance at some point.
It's supposed to be on somebody's to-do list.
Right.
Somebody's to-do list has it on it.
So, so when we make this motion, let's not say that it's u-unique. It's just due to the nature of the property or something. But I support it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Havens?
Yeah, I don't see any issue with it as well. I support the, the appellant.
Okay, yeah, I agree. Absolutely beautiful property, truly. Just a lot of love and care.
A lot of hours spent out there.
Yeah, I can only imagine. I would love, if you wanted to come spend some time at my house. I'm just kidding. But yeah, it's beautiful. So, Mr. Wygum, since you, or I'm sorry, Mr. Friedman, since you have opinions, I won't.
Okay.
You want to make the motion?
In regard to case twenty-two dash thirteen, the, the appellant's Aaron and Delia.
Stroyewski.
Zadruski, sorry. Are requi- are requesting the following waiver from the board, a waiver to erect a fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard, zero feet permitted, permitted, thirty feet, six inches proposed. The property is located on the east side of Woodstock Street between Madison Street and Nadora Street at three-zero-four-six-zero Woodstock Sidwell Parcel two-four-one-two one-two-six-zero-three-two Zoned R-2 Single Family Residential. I move that we approve the waiver of the, of the fence for a six-foot-high private, privacy fence, thirty feet, five inches beyond the side of the house, with the condition that the fence complies with all other fence ordinance requirements. This recommendation is based on the following, due to the nature of the property, the strict application of the regulations will result in practical difficulties to the owner of the property. And the proposed fence is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area. It would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon the adjacent or surrounding properties.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, your request is approved. And again, work with the city on your permit and, and the steps from there.
So I still have to go through the permitting department to get.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's the next step.
When you're done, you come over and fix her yacht.
[laughing] Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Have a good night. All right, so moving to the next item on the agenda. Looks like we do not have any minutes, but we have a meeting in, I guess it's two weeks, on the twenty-first. It is a sign case. Is there anything to note?
So, asking for a second sign not facing a major thoroughfare.
I see, okay. And is the period closed for that? That'll be the only case? Okay. Are they paying for their own meeting then?
To the, through the board, to the, through the chair, to the board, yes, they did pay for a special.
Okay.
Which I think is going to become more common.
Okay. And then our meeting after that, do we bump up against the holiday? Is our meeting after that the?
The meeting after the twenty-first would be July third.
Fifth.
July fifth, yes.
Yep, okay.
And I don't have any cases or potential cases.
At this point, okay.
At this point, yeah.
So you'll let us know by email if we need to cancel that meeting and we can reply by email or something? Okay.
Yes, I will.
Okay. All right. Any other miscellaneous?
I don't know, it may adjourn.
All right.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
There, there was some conflict between this space and city council on the twenty-first.
Oh.
Then I'm not sure if that ever got confirmed. We talked about it at the last meeting. I brought it up.
Oh, okay.
So we might want to clarify that with city council because I believe they're, they were scheduled for the, the Monday night.
Oh.
For something, some sort of hearing or.
Oh, it's Juneteenth, yeah.
Yeah, and that's Juneteenth and they, it was rumored and I heard from several people that they were going to move it to the twenty-first.
Okay.
So we probably want to clarify that before we.
Okay.
Uh, move forward.
We could probably move, we've had meetings next door. So, and especially if it's only one case, we could certainly meet next door.
So to the board, through the chair, I will look into this. We, I don't know what we're going to do. I'll look into this. We have to be in this room because.
Oh, that's how it's been noticed?
It's mandated that. No, not for that reason. It's been mandated now that all boards are televised.
Oh.
So I'll, I'll work on this and I'll, I'll let everyone know.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to adjourn. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.